I want to start with the pledge.
Here. Item number three is privilege of the floor. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to be heard at privilege of the floor for any matter other than the public hearing for the Cumberland Farms? If you would, just sit right to the podium, that way you'll be on tape. And if you'd just, for the record, give your name and address.
Yeah, Jeff Mazzone, 227 Alexander Avenue. Let me preface this by saying I just spoke with Andrew. And I probably could have gotten an answer from him if I had called him before. Before the snowfall, a couple of weeks back, I noticed that the street in front of my house was 227 Alexander Ave. It had been marked with blue spray paint. The water main shut off was marked with blue spray paint. And there was a blue line leading up to my house for my water line where my water line enters my house. And I know that I didn't order it. So I assumed that this had something to do with the village. Consistent with the past, you know, I've had issues with lack of transparencies on things that are happening that I'm not aware of, especially when it's directly related to my property. I didn't find any, I remember seeing anything in the paper. I scoured the board meetings and the only thing that I could really find was that there were a number of references to applications for federal grants and thought maybe that was the reason why my property had been marked and spray painted blue. You have to forgive me on this because once bitten, twice shy. I'm just curious as to what's going on and would appreciate some transparency on it, which Andrew just gave to me and he's going to rectify it for me tomorrow. But I don't like surprises on what's going on with my property or what's going on in my street. And I didn't want to be surprised like I was with the sidewalk on Skamahorn. And that leads me, in addition, to say thank you to the mayor or whoever made the decision on the snow removal after this past snowfall on Skamahorn, recognizing that the sidewalk needed special attention. I had my sidewalk cleared by 8:30 that night, Wednesday night, and by 6 o'clock on Thursday morning, the clouds had gone by, the sidewalk was completely covered, and I just couldn't get to it before the kids went to school. And I know that this is a safety issue on that sidewalk. But to my surprise, that afternoon, there were front loaders taking the snow away and putting it in trucks and hauling it. The sidewalks were clear by Thursday night, which I hope becomes a standard practice on heavy snowfalls because that's just a bad situation. It's a great idea, bad situation with a heavy snowfall. It makes it worse for the kids, not better. So even though I was very critical of that sidewalk, I wanted to thank you for the snow removal. In closing, I wanted to just say again, if you could share any information on why my water main was marked, but Andrew took care of that and I'll touch base with him tomorrow and he'll give me more information on why that happened. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who cares to be heard at privilege of the floor?
Chris Yarres skipped the birthday.
Skip what?
I'm going to do that under my comments.
Oh, are you?
But since we've had a mini presentation, I'll just say for the crowd, February is the month of the incorporation of the Village of Scotia in 1904. So every year during our February regular meeting, we celebrate the birthday of the village. This is the village's 114th birthday. And in the past, we used to do a cake, but we always ended up having one or two pieces eaten and then we would send it over to the fire department and let the firemen eat it. So tonight, trustee Gifford's wife Nancy, who is probably the best baker among us, did some cooking, so.
I'll pass it around.
And so now while that's being done, I'm going to move on to item number four, which is a special draft use permit for Cumberland Farms. The action tonight is to approve the special use permit for the gas pumps. Did you guys have anything that you wanted to present before we open the public hearing?
We can, we can if you choose. It's the privilege of.
I don't, it's not necessary in my eyes, but.
I can do it for the crowd?
What's that?
I can do it for the folks in the audience?
Does the trustee feel they need any information or more information on this project? I think we're good. I think we'll just open a public hearing and move forward there. So at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who cares to be heard on the Cumberland Farms project here tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing then. And I would entertain a negative declaration on this secret. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then finally, I would entertain a motion for the special use permit related to the gas pumps for the Cumberland Farms project. Make a motion?
I'll second a motion.
Any discussion on that one?
I still feel that it was a planning board and it doesn't really have any direct relation to the gas pumps, but they didn't do anything to approach the design guidelines or, you know, make it. Make the project anything what the village said they wanted in their design guidelines.
Any other discussion? So here, I think it would be appropriate to call it all.
Justine Mathis?
Yes.
Justine Gifford?
No.
Justine Tiberio?
Yes.
Justine Rizzo?
Yes.
And Pat Smith?
Yes. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll give you just a minute or two to.
After bringing all the stuff.
You gotta cook you.
Can I ask a question? Okay. I understand that the permits expire within six months, a six-month period, and work has to be performed. If work isn't performed within the six months, do I make a new application just to undo it?
Yeah, you have to, well.
Yes, I can talk to you later, but I'm just curious only because we were anticipating it being a year, I understand, to the six months, so I just want to make sure that we're in tune is what we have to do.
Yeah, you would have to come back for the board first, then approve it again. But there are things you could do to.
In order to.
It doesn't have to be completed within six months. So you could probably, I'm sure, get that far within six months, but, you know, the lawyers can tell you exactly what you have to do.
Excellent. Thank you.
I would give the impression the lawyers are covered coming after the planning board.
Well, they might, they might. You just never know. I'm not writing the checks.
Okay, so moving on, item number five, unsafe building finding for 22nd out of the road, so this is by October 12. Building inspector, you know, the water service for the building is substandard and there's conditions in the building that caused him to condemn the building. Our, our role is to officially resolve the condemn of the building. In the resolution, we have to have a timeframe for, you know, to give the owner the opportunity to, you know, meet the requirements to bring that building back in the building. So in the resolution, it calls for the repair work to be commenced by March 12th, completed by July 27th. For the rest of the people, terminology. Does anybody care to move that?
Can we have ten phones?
Let's get a second.
Some of it you might want to hear in the next session. And there will be a public hearing March 6th. So the owner, or not a public hearing, a hearing for the owner.
So this is just setting the dates that he's got to comply by.
Okay.
One second. Any discussion on that? I think probably call the roll on this one.
Justine Mathis?
Yes.
Justine Gifford?
Yes.
Justine Tiberio?
Yes.
Justine Rizzo?
Yes. Item number six is to authorize me to sign the inter municipal agreement with the town of Landville for their contribution to our summer recreation program?
I'm opposed.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven is to set the standard workday and reporting for the elected official and appointed officials. In this case, it's just our deputy judge, Pete Toons. I'll start here. Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight is to authorize me to sign the renewal of our workers' compensation liability program with the Public Employee Risk Management Association.
I'd oppose.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nine is to authorize me to sign contract with McDonald Engineering to provide the services for the Round 13 MS4 comprehensive mapping grant. This is what we discussed the rest of the county is participating in.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 10 is to authorize me to sign the renewal for our iMed vision care, which I'm pretty happy to say is a zero percent increase for the next two years.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 11 is to sign the renewal contract with Repeat Business Systems for our IT Management.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 12 is to authorize me to sign a letter content with smart watt energy for the LED street lighting project.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we should be pretty excited about that one. Item 13 is to authorize me to sign the contract with McDonald Engineering for the Bridge New York funding application in amount not to exceed $9,500.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're not too excited on that one, but.
I held my thoughts for the.
Item 14 is be appointing George Solotruk as a member of the planning board to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Kyle Herzog. So thank you, George.
I'll make a motion.
That's just my appointment because it's a vacancy. Item 15 is to appoint Susan Tucknick as alternate member of the zoning board of the field. So I'll make the motion if somebody would like to second it.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm just going to make myself a little note for my comments here. Sorry. Triggered a thought.
You kind of read that fast.
Item 16 is a resolution to approve, to approve volunteer firefighter John Reart III.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 17 is to adopt the revised central business district guidelines.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 18 is a resolution to adopt the central business district guidelines policy. Did you guys receive a copy of the wording of the policy?
Just in the resolution.
Okay. So I'm just going to read it so that we know. It's what we discussed. Lydia cleaned it up for me, but it says, "The central business district design guidelines shall be reviewed for revision upon the expiration of each term of the planning board chair or not less than every five years." Anybody care to move that policy?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 19 is the mayor's comments to the board. Before I make my comments to you, I just might want to make a comment to Jeff Mazzone because you're sitting through the whole meeting.
Yeah, just, yeah.
So it's got to look to you like we're just flying through this stuff and not doing any work.
No, that is not true.
So what I want to, what I want to point out though is, this is our second meeting of the month. So the first meeting of the month is our work session. In our work session, we show up in our street clothes and we have the discussions and questions and answers and presentations and everything for all of these topics that we move and pass at the business meeting tonight. So you see the length of the agenda, so we do it in two meetings so that any question's going to be answered and when we come to actually take the official action of the board, that we don't all of a sudden get a surprise and come up to work.
Understood. Thank you.
It looks like we're going very quickly through this.
I know there's a lot more behind it.
Well, they're dealt with, you're talking about clarity or transparency. So they were, they were dealt with in another public meeting a week ago.
My concern, Mr. Mayor, is that more things are published to the public. A lot of stuff that you guys do on your work sessions is still in this room, I'm assuming. And it just seems to me that a lot of the times, things are, decisions are made, which is great. It's progress. Unfortunately, citizens, residents, don't get the benefit of that. And that's what I would like to see more of moving forward. If that's a fair statement.
I'd love to have a conversation with you on that at some point in time because it's, it's a constant challenge.
Got it. And maybe I can help you.
Give me a call. Anybody that calls me, I return the call. So I'll give a call to the offices and I'll give you a call.
Thank you.
Okay, so back to my comments. If you guys remember, we were going to recognize Lou Bermaester tonight. I made my contacts at the bank. They felt they needed more time to gather together the information that I was looking for as far as his contributions to the community. So I've got that scheduled for our regular monthly meeting next, next month. And, you know, I plan on naming him as a patron of the village. So, and so we'll do that next month. He could be in Florida right now. He deserves it if he is.
He does.
I think you probably all know that the parking lot out here, the middle is the municipal lot, the one end is City View Church's, this end is Gary's. We've got a lease agreement with City View Church to use the entire lot because they only basically use it on Sundays. What happened was someone new bought the apartment building over here and was telling his tenants that they could park in the lot overnight. So we didn't know that. He was telling them that they couldn't park in the village lot, but they could park in the church lot. So it caused me to pull out the lease just to check and make sure what the terms were. And then it caused me to realize that the lease was expired. It was a five-year term. So Lydia and I met with one of the trustees from the church, talked about some of the conditions of the lease. There were some weird things in there because it was the first time the lease had been done. So there were weird things about getting some paving finished and all that, so it didn't need to be part of the renewal. So Lydia has done the renewal. I'm going to send it to the trustee and if it's all agreeable, which I can't see how it can't be because it's the same terms, then we'll just renew the lease at our next monthly meeting as well. So it's a dollar a year for a term of five years.
And did they take care of the people parking there?
Yeah, yeah. They, they, they don't want people parking there overnight either. Because you know that once somebody parks, uses that as their parking spot, then they're worried that on Sunday mornings, there's going to be 20 cars in the lot that are living in the neighborhoods around here and they won't have their people parked. It's the same concern that we have. Well, the guy, I like the guy too. He was, we dealt with some other issues with him to help the church out a little bit too, so. What I give you, I'm pretty excited. We have our first ice fishing day for kids. DEC is coming on Thursday, the 22nd, from 8 to noon. And I'm going to put on an ice fishing clinic for youth on Collins Lake Forest this year. So that's Thursday, the 22nd, which is during the president's day vacation. So hopefully it'll be successful.
Using Tom's hole.
I hope not. For the first time ever, I attended the meeting of the parade committee, the Memorial Day Parade Committee, at their request because, you know, Corinne Lombardi, that, Lombardo, that did an excellent, excellent job for the last couple of years and now has moved out of the area. So she's not doing it. With the departure of her, the person that had done the fundraising for Ever has decided that they no longer want that responsibility. And there's a huge vacuum now. So Bob Van Hors will be running the parade for this year, but he's 80 some years old and said that this is his last year. So he'll be done. And that just about wipes everybody out. So I attended their meeting. They're asking me to try to get the word out that they're looking for some energetic, eager people. They don't have to have experience to kind of fill out the ranks on the parade committee. I'm going to send a mass email out to see if we can get some people in there. But there's a real scare that, you know, without some people on the ranks, that this, this event's going to go away. So if you know anybody that would be interested, they don't have to be a veteran. They did already contact some of the veterans organizations to see if anybody that was a member of those would be interested. But it's like with everything else nowadays, to get volunteered is very difficult. So. I wanted to point out that the artwork now hung by the Scottish Landville school pins to decorate our village hall for the next couple of weeks. So I would like to take a look at what these kids do because they're pretty talented, way more than me. And then finally, the thing that I had to jot down is, I had a conversation a couple days ago with Jim Martin, who you may know, he's a former town councilman, former chair of our planning board here in the village until he got out of the village, and an expert in planning and development. So I called him on a different issue about this idea we've been talking about in that vision committee about this economic development organization or committee that would look at both Scotia and Landville to try to get, you know, businesses in here and stuff like that cooperatively. But one of the things he talked to me about was the idea of combining our zoning and planning boards into one zoning and planning commission, village only, not town and village, but village only. It's been done successfully in some other smaller villages. And he said, you know, it can make sense because we see how often our zoning board meets and then the problem that they're, they meet so infrequently that when an issue comes before them, they don't really have the experience and background. So I'm going to call the mayor of Serenac Lake. They just finished doing it and ask him what his experience is with that. And then I'll bring it to you guys to see what you think of the idea. I'm not sure how you deal with the fact that you've got 10 people now appointed for a term and you can't take that away from them. You can't say, well, you're out. So you start with 10 and it, you know, through attrition, you get back down to the five that you're supposed to have. So I'll talk to Serenac Lake, but I just want to plant that seed for you guys to think about. I think it might be a tough one to look at.
We've had that amount of attrition in the years for quite a while.
Yep, yep. So, okay, those are my comments. Item 20, correspondence is on a special committee reports, trustee Mathis.
Visionary committee met, as you mentioned, Mayor. Really had a good meeting in regards to the structure and narrowing it down most, a couple of different topics that they're going to come and present after they meet out the level of importance. And they're going to present it to the both boards, Landville and the town and the village. And it was a really, really productive meeting. And I'm really excited about the results coming up.
Thank you. Trustee Gifford.
We had a planning board meeting that you've heard about. We had a fire department meeting. It was uneventful. We had the fire department drill on, ice rescue drill that you got invited to, but Tom appeared by binoculars. But I got to swim and it was, it was pretty, it was pretty interesting.
I got a joke by not saying it. Justine Tiberio.
We had a zoning board meeting to clean up the Dairy Circus project, which was approved there various instances. And we had a bid meeting yesterday morning. The bid is looking to do a couple of different things on Mohawk Avenue this spring. So be on the lookout for that. And they are hosting a mixer on May 3rd. I think it's going to be at the E-Turf Tavern. Sure we're all invited.
Thank you. Trustee Rizzo.
We got a freedom park meeting and they're putting together a budget for this season and also looking into different groups that they're going to have. They're going to probably schedule for a cleanup that we do every year, just to get inside, keep the places at once over. That will be coming up this soon. So, and they're also pleased about getting their programs to the Watchford Visitor Center, which I go down every year and drop them off. And I'll drop off some more of our docking material for them. So they're going to make some extra copies for me so I can do that. And that's basically it.
Thanks. Item number 21, are the departmental reports, any questions or comments on the departmental reports? Can we move to accept them with our thanks?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 22, the audit of claims.
I'll make a motion. Pay the bills.
I'll second. Any discussion on that one? Please call it all.
Justine Mathis?
Yes.
Justine Gifford?
Yes.
Justine Tiberio?
Yes.
Justine Rizzo?
Yes. Item 23 is the approval of the minutes from our January 10 regular meeting. Make a motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 24 is the approval of the minutes from the February 6 special meeting of the trustees.
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 25 is new business. Any new business from a trustee?
I just had, I had a question, Andrew, in regards to the, what is going on with the, do you know what's going on with the information Mr. Mazzone brought?
Yeah. There's a program statewide, or it's nationwide, called Dig Safe New York. So if a utility or anyone's digging, they're supposed to call ahead to have utilities marked out. And I just checked with Andy, the crew leader who does the mark outs, and it was a National Grid supposedly wants to dig up to make the gas repair. So when they call, we get a ticket that says 227 Alexander Ave. And we mark out the water and the sewer mains. Some municipalities don't mark out the water and sewer laterals. But again, we like to do those. But we can see by your report every month that Mr. Mazone is not being singled out because there is like 100 of them this last month. Yeah, we do. Yeah, in the winter, in the summer, we'll do maybe 150. It all depends on. I mean, National Grid's the big one, but if someone's putting in a fence, if someone's putting, planting a tree, if someone, they're supposed to call. We call too if we're digging. But one of our responsibilities is to mark out our infrastructure so it doesn't get damaged.
Makes sense. I was just curious.
No, and, and it does. And I appreciate the, the information because I didn't, you know, if I was, if I had ordered it, if I was planting a tree or putting in a fence, I would call them and that's what I would expect them to mark my water main. So I know I'm not going to, you know, hit it when I'm digging. But that wasn't the case. I mean, it was just there. I don't know why. Andy thinks that it's probably National Grid that drove by and might have seen a problem where they were concerned, so they, so they marked my property.
National Grid has been, I don't know if it's a winter thing, but they have sniffers on, they have vehicles with gas sniffers. And when they, they get a hit, they'll, they'll call it in. It's a, it's a, it's a lot of work because this is, this is not, probably not the first time we'll have to mark this out. Because it expires after a certain amount of time. So they get this company to come in, which is great, and they find 100 leaks, which means there's 100 digs that we have to mark out. And then they don't, they don't do anything with them.
And it hasn't been me.
And then they call again.
See, they did it to me, but I knew what it was, so.
Well, well, now I'll call them and say, why didn't you, why didn't you tell me that my property was, that I was sniffed?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other?
New business?
I got two. Typically, in our February meeting, our historian gives her annual report, but she submitted it this afternoon. So I'm going to forward that to you guys electronically so you'll get the report. of what she's done this past year, and I think we all are pretty aware anyway, but and you already know we have the archaeology project coming up in the spring, so... So I'll send that to you. And then my last piece was, we have the floating third Monday of the month meeting. Third Monday of the month this month is President's Day, which is a holiday. I would propose, I believe the 19th, I would propose that we have the meeting and have it on the 20th, which is the Tuesday, and I'd like the topic to be the RFP that we're exploring for the building project. That's fine. You say okay?
My wife is threatening to take us out of town that week, but I'll see if it hasn't happened yet.
February 20?
No, like next, or next Tuesday.
Yep, and the goal for me is just to get, oh, two things. The goal for me is to get us just all we know where we're going, you know, with this RFP, so that we don't get to a certain point and there's a misunderstanding. And the second thing is, I would, I was not able to line up the interviews for the vacancy on the vision committee, so I'd like to do the interviews for the vision committee first thing that evening as well.
At 6:00?
6:00.
At 6:00.
Yeah, go right at 6:00 and then we can talk about the RFP.